Evening councillors and members of the public, both those present and those watching on our webcam transmission. Before we commence the meeting, I draw your attention to the fire regulations which are displayed on the screens. There are no practice fire alarms planned for this evening, so in the event of the alarm sounding, please leave the chamber as quickly as possible by one of three exits, one, two and three. We will assemble across the road under the canopy of Waitrose. Mobile phones, can I ask everyone please to switch them off or to silent? Members of the public, I do appreciate that as a committee we understand all matters under discussion this evening may be emotive. However, I would ask that you all respect those around you in the public gallery and those members of the committee and refrain from expressing your feelings by booing, cheering or any other form of disturbance. This is a meeting held in public, it's not a public meeting. This application tonight before the Joint Planning Committee is a full application. It was first registered in September 2017, it was deferred at our meeting on... sixteen, sorry. It was deferred at our meeting in June the 28th, 2017, to seek further additional information on three points in relation to flood risk, sequential test and odour impacts from the adjacent sewerage treatment works. Outside consultants have produced a flooding aspect and SUD system and they've been invited to this meeting to inform the committee of the proposals and answer any subsequent questions from members. I'll introduce them shortly. Also present is the Surrey County Council Lead Local Flood Authority Officer. Any questions on this aspect of the report will be directed to Peter Cleveland, who will indicate who will address that inquiry. And while on the subject, can I just remind everyone to draw your attention to the update sheet and in particular Condition 10 on page two and the amendments to the report on page three. The sequential test is in the report and will be addressed by the officers. The odour report is covered in the report on pages thirteen, thirty-four and thirty-five. As this meeting is webcast, I'd like to introduce the officers sitting at the table in front of me. At the far side is Mary Clark, a team leader for Central and Eastern, Elizabeth Sims, Head of Planning at Waverley, then Glenn Westmore, Team Leader for Flood Risk Asset Planning and Programming at Surrey County Council, Peter Cleveland, Head of Development Control, Chris French, who is the Senior Planning Officer and Officer responsible for this report, then Rick Topman, who is Canon Consulting and will talk on the SUDs issue, and then Barry Devlin, our Legal Representative. Moving on to main items on the agenda. Item number one, minutes to the last meeting. The minutes have been laid on the table for the last thirty minutes. Is it your wish I signed them as a true record of that meeting on the 20th of September?
Chair, right, seven.
Councillor Barnes.
Is that the 28th of July, 28th of July or...
No, confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 20th of September. Thank you. Apologies for absence, Emma.
We have apologies from Councillors David Hunter, Nick Williams, Chris Story, Dennis Lee and John Ward. Councillor Bob Upton is attending as a substitute.
Thank you. Item three, declarations of interest, Emma.
None before the meeting.
And four, Emma, question from members of the public?
None received.
Right, moving on to item five. Item A1, WA 2016 1921, land south of Elmbridge Road Cranly, erection of fifty-four dwellings including sixteen affordable homes and associated parking, landscaping and amenity space at land south of Elmbridge Road Cranly. And this is a full application. And to introduce this, first of all Peter Cleveland and then Chris French.
Yes, thank you Chairman. Just to start off, I just want to pick up on a few key points of guidance on the application before you this evening. So as you're aware, the application was deferred by the JPC on the 28th of June and this was for officers to go away and seek additional information in relation to flood risk, update on the sequential test and odour impacts from the nearby sewage treatment works. In response to this deferral, additional information has been provided and that is in the form of an updated flood risk assessment, so a full updated flood risk assessment and a hydraulic modelling study which provides a model of the potential flood events in taking account of additional climate changes allowances as well. We've also got an updated note in relation to the odour assessment and these were all produced following the JPC consideration of the application. So importantly, the officer's report sets out the key material considerations which members should take into account in determining the application. The site is located within the countryside beyond the green belt, outside the developed area boundary. However, it is located in a sustainable location and the site's development would not result in harm to the wider landscape character or countryside. Following careful consideration, the application details... Sorry, following careful consideration of the application details and relevant site constraints, there are no technical objections to the application that officers consider that could reasonably defend it at appeal. Members are advised that the weighted balance in favour of sustainable development applies to this application and members will need to weigh into the balance the delivery of fifty-four homes, thirty per cent of which will be affordable. And this is a material consideration which must carry significant weight in the determination of the application. So I now pass over to Chris to just to take you through the detail. Thank you.
In response to a neighbour representation which included details of the previous flooding event on the site, for the avoidance of doubt, the Environment Agency have reiterated that their position remains that of no objection. You will see that we've suggested an amendment to Condition Six to make this a prior to first occupation requirement rather than a pre commencement condition. We've also suggested an amendment to Condition Twelve to allow for a phased discharge of the SUDs condition. With regards to Condition Nine, officers consider this is adequately covered within the reports, therefore we're suggesting that Condition Nine is deleted from the officer recommendation. The Local Lead Flood Authority have also reviewed the wording of Condition Ten and suggested an amendment to the wording which is within the addendum. There's also one update to the officer's report which refers to the fifth paragraph on page forty-six. This should be updated to reflect the fact that the applicant's modelling shows the SUDs to be outside of the flood zones. It's also been drawn to officers' attention that the second paragraph of the updates within the addendum should refer to SUDs being within... previously having been within flood zones two and three, two rather than three. I'll now run through the details of the application. This is the location plan, the application sites outlined in red. As you can see from the... because you can see the site forms a field adjacent to the settlement's boundary with Cranly. The Elmbridge Road runs from east to west and along the northern site boundary, you can see the Cranly Waters... The Cranly Waters, which is the main river, is located to the west here. You can also see the existing properties on this plan which are part of Elm Park to the east. And on the opposite side of the road is the sewage treatment works. This is an aerial photograph of the site and you can see that from this plan, the relationship between the site and the west Cranly Nurseries site which is to the south, which has recently been consented for housing, that's been highlighted in blue, so you can see the relationship between those two sites. This is the proposed layout. As you can see, the development comprises a mixture of detached, semi-detached terraced and flat, flatted properties. They range in detail and design. All properties are two-storey in height and a tree belt notably runs along the northern and along the eastern boundaries of the site. There's a footpath link which is also proposed on the eastern boundary. I've also highlighted the affordable housing units in blue. You can see that they're spread across the site rather than being clustered in one particular area. The flatted building is located centrally within the site in order to reduce its prominence, it's set away from the site boundary. There's also open space to the south and west which falls partly within flood zones two and three. Following the previous deferral, the applicant has undertaken a hydraulic modelling of the flood zones. This plan shows the extent of the flood zones following their modelling exercise. Both the Environment Agency and the Lead Local Flood Authority have been consulted on the updated modelling and have raised no objections. And these are the floor plans and elevations of plot one. Plot one is obviously a detached four-bedroom property with a attached garage. The property has a mixture of gable features, hip roofs, some tile hanging and a bay window. The height of this property is approximately nine point four metres. And these are plots eight and nine, which are the three-bedroom semi-detached properties. They have front gables, a mixture of tile hanging and brickwork and the properties have a ridge height of approximately eight point eight metres. And these are plots eighteen to twenty-one. These properties have clay tiles, porches, a mixture of brickwork, weatherboarding and to the front here. Plot twenty-one would be part of the affordable housing provision and plots eighteen, nineteen, eighteen, nineteen and twenty would be the markets, part of the market provision. These are the proposed floor plans for those properties. And these are plots ten to twelve, which also form part of the affordable housing provision. These are three-bedroom units with a ridge height of approximately nine point four metres. Plots twenty-two to twenty-nine comprise eight flats and in the form of five-two bedroom and three-one bedroom flats. These also have... form part of the affordable housing provision for the site. The building would be two-storey in height with a ridge height of approximately eight point nine metres. The elevation at the top, up the top here, would be the principal elevation facing out into the site, fronting the roads. The building contains a mixture of cladding, weatherboarding and brickwork on the lower These are the proposed floor plans of the flatted building. You can see the bin stores as well within the ground floor. We have a street scene drawing here. This is the... that's the street scene as viewed from the front of the site. You can see there's a mixture of different building types and the materials would range amongst those different buildings there. And this is the street scene within the site, so taken as a cross-section centrally from within the site. On the top left, we have the photograph taken showing the access, close to where the access point would be for onto the Elmbridge Road. And on the bottom right, we have a photograph taken looking within the site and towards Elm Park Road. And this is also looking towards the boundary with Elm Park Road taken from within the site. You can see the treed boundary there. This slide splits the main issues into matters of principle and technical opinion on the left-hand side and matters of judgement on the right. In terms of the main considerations, officers consider that there would be an impact on the countryside from the development, however, this is outweighed by the benefits of delivering a housing in a location that officers consider to be appropriate, an appropriate extension of the settlement. Turning to layouts and design of the developments, the properties are of a mixed design and scale and officers are satisfied that as a whole the development is acceptable on design and layouts grounds. It's noted that some of the properties fall below the nationally described space standards. However, all properties would be of a reasonable size in the absence of a local plan policy that requires these standards to be met. It's considered that the size of the units would be of an acceptable standard. With regards to odour, the applicant has submitted an odour survey along with a further supporting statement from a separate consultancy who have confirmed that they have reviewed the process and confirmed the sampling undertaken is sufficient to demonstrate that the future occupants would not suffer from adverse impacts on amenity. And this has been reviewed by both the council's environmental health department and also Thames Water. On the basis of these reports, neither are raising objection. With regards to flood risk, additional modelling has been undertaken following the members' deferral in June and this demonstrates that the housing and the SUDs would be outside of flood zones two and three. Subject to conditions, no objections are raised by the Environment Agency or the Lead Local Flood Authority and it's considered the proposal would not adversely impact on flood risk. Furthermore, whilst it is noted that a number of representations raise concerns with foul sewage capacity, Thames Water have confirmed there is no objection on capacity grounds. For the reasons set out in the officer's report, as updated in the addendum, recommendation A is for approval. Thank you Chairman. I'll now pass across to the applicant's drainage engineer who will run through the details of the information which has been supplied in relation to flood risk.
Good evening all. I am Rick Topman from Canon Consulting Engineers. I've worked in the field of flood risk and drainage for the last twenty-two years. On watching the June Planning Committee, it was evident that clarity on the matter of flooding was needed, which is why I find myself here this evening. The June Committee picked up three key areas where further information or clarification was sought. Number one was that the flood extents for the updated climate change allowances are established. Number two was that further discussion between the Environment Agency and the Lead Local Flood Authority take place on the matter of the Sustainable Drainage System in Flood Zone Two, Flood Zone Two being the area at risk of the extreme storm event, that's the one in a thousand year probability event. And number three, that the flooding witnessed by the community and recorded through photographic evidence has been taken into account. On that, there was a good point linked to this part of the discussion on the 28th of June about levelled items, so we could all be happy that apples were being compared with apples rather than apples being compared with pears. So picking up the first point, could we have... oh, we've got it, marvellous. So, a bit of site context, we have Cranly Waters to the west of the site and Little Mead Brook to the south of the site, both sit outside the site boundary. The closest proposed dwelling to Cranly Waters is a hundred and fifteen metres away and the closest house to Little Mead Brook is seventy-five metres away. So to address point one, updating for climate change, the EA's flood model was enhanced and run with the new climate change allowances. In this part of the country, this is for a thirty-five per cent and a seventy per cent increase in peak river flow. The extent of flooding under the larger of those two, the seventy per cent increase, shows a floodplain where at its closest, and that's to the properties on the southern side, the floodplain comes to within twenty-five metres of those proposed dwellings. The updated and enhanced flood modelling serves to prove that the precautionary approach in the flood risk assessment that supported the planning application was entirely appropriate. For that, just by way of context, we took an upstream in-channel flood level which was a flood level at the confluence of the Little Mead Brook and Cranly Waters and you do that to basically generate conservative flood outlines in absence of site-specific flood levels from two-dimensional modelling. Two-dimensional modelling giving you a depth and a velocity output over a 3D ground surface which we have now. So the updated model was presented in a revision of the flood risk assessment. This was sent to the Environment Agency and the Lead Local Flood Authority and both parties continue to raise no objection to the development proposals. So moving on to point two, whilst I'd like to talk about the technicalities of SUDs and flood zones, what we've actually got here is a site-specific flood model that actually takes the main water attenuation basin outside of the area susceptible to flooding under the extreme one-in-a-thousand-year storm event. So moving away from all these technicalities and the science of hydraulic modelling, I think point three is the best way to set the context for this site and that point three, this is looking at some of the photographic evidence we have in the area and what we have from witness accounts in the community of flooding. So when we prepared the original flood risk assessment, we were aware of historic flooding through our flood data requests. There was a lovely wealth of images on the Cranly Civic Society webpages as well. Whilst these photos don't actually show floodwater on the higher land where we're actually proposing development, they do provide a very good indication of the historic flooding and the relatively frequent flooding in this location. So I'd like to refer to one particular photo, if I may, which is of the Elmbridge Road Bridge over the Cranly Waters, because this specific one gives me a great reference point. If we can just rewind one actually to the levels, that's it. Okay, so here we are. So this is... that thick blue line there is the water course, that's Cranly Waters going underneath Elmbridge Road. What we've got here, this is a zoomed-in extract from the drawing we were looking at earlier and what we've got there is, we can see the carriageway level is about forty-four point nine metres AOD and the little footways either side are about forty-five metres AOD. These are surveyed levels, a proper site-specific survey based on ordinance datum derived from the national GPS network. That was effectively guys on site with very expensive instruments, you know, they're dialled into the ordinance survey in the Leica correction networks when undertaking these surveys. So this survey information is to an accuracy of one centimetre, so it's as accurate as you can get. Just as a check on all of this, because there's been quite a lot of flow of information about accuracy of data, LiDAR data, that's light detection and ranging, that's basically a national dataset for the country, it's now freely available, it's high resolution data. We downloaded it for this area, we converted it into a contoured survey and that was plus or minus four centimetres accuracy. So these levels that we refer to, going back to that very valid datum point, are all above ordinance datum with maximum accuracy. So, let's get back to my thread. So if we remember those two levels, so the actual carriageway surface, forty-four point nine metres and the footways at forty-five point zero, if we fast forward and look at the image from December 2013, so this was quite a significant event for the south-east of England, the winter of thirteen and fourteen generated a fair bit of flooding. I don't know whether all can see that. What we've got there, we've got floodwater clearly on the carriageway surface and I don't know whether we can see that resolution, but the footway is just dry. So we can take this as a great reference point. So if the footway's at forty-five, the carriageway's at forty-four point nine, we effectively have floodwater there at a level of forty-five metres AOD. Now, why that's a good reference point is all the academic modelling shows us that the one-in-a-thousand-year extreme flood event is thirty centimetres higher than that, so it's forty-five point three. So in essence, if I was standing on that footway, I would expect to have water up to the top of my welly boots. That's the one-in-a-thousand-year flood. What we must then also take into account is that the development's on the higher part of the site, now that's nearly a metre higher, that's point nine and above higher, so again, if I was standing in that photo there, that would be above my waist then, so it's that sort of water and you'd have to generate just for it to get up to the edge of the properties as proposed. So the wealth of this photographic evidence helps us to highlight the frequency of flooding as well. Our modelling shows that this floodplain is active under just a one-in-twenty-year storm, you know, forget the big extreme one in a thousand, the one in twenty generates a fair flood output in this location on the lower-lying areas, off-site and on the fringe of our site. So directing the proposed housing to the higher parts of the site outside of the floodplain with a planning condition proposed that minimum floor levels are set relative to that extreme flood, the one in a thousand year, will protect the new development from flooding. Thank you for listening. I'd be happy to answer any questions if directed my way.
Thank you very much, Councillor Topman. We now move to public speaking and first of all I call on Richard Bryant. You know the procedure, sir, you have four minutes from when you start speaking.
My name is Richard Bryant and I'm speaking on behalf of Cranly Civic Society. We are astounded that the application is still flawed as quite simply not a single house should be built on this site for all the reasons so eloquently and forcefully explained by many members at the meeting on 28th of June. Recently, housing has been approved on numerous unsuitable sites in Cranly, but without doubt, this site is the worst and it is the only remaining floodplain in Cranly on which development has not been approved. No matter how many times the applicant's consultants work on desktop studies to juggle about the facts and figures to attain the desired conclusions, the true fact is that this site floods both seriously and very regularly. Also, when it is hot and the wind is in the wrong direction, it stinks, being so close to the Cranly Sewerage Treatment Works which is already over capacity. Just today, we completed a study of the effects of the illegal dredging by KPI. We knew this was done to move the flood risk on their site downstream. Well, we have now ascertained that this is the Thakum site which will be affected, so there's now an even greater flood risk. We expect the planning officers will try to oversimplify the issue as they did on 28th of June and try to coerce you into approving the application, but in reality, nothing has changed. The very detailed and professional Ove Arup report dated January 2017 still stands and it shows the odour risk problem on this site very clearly. There's been another development today. Thames Water have now accepted that Cranly's AC Alspister's drinking water pipes have to be replaced and they expect the first phase of this work to start in early 2018. In the meantime, no new houses should be connected to the mains as the existing problem would be exacerbated and lead to even more frequent bursts. In the past four weeks, we have had five serious bursts in just eighteen days. I am a chartered insurance broker and if despite all the local evidence, including photographs we have presented to you, planning law and common sense go out of the window and the application is granted and flooding occurs, I will be under a professional and moral obligation to bring to the attention of insurers all the evidence we have provided to you and which you will have ignored. We now address what we call the human aspect of flooding. As affordable homes are always sighted in the lowest and most vulnerable areas, they will suffer the most damage. This could plunge first-time buyers with huge mortgages into negative equity as they will own a house which has considerably reduced in value and in the worst-case scenario may be unsalable. After flooding, will flood insurance be available at an affordable price? Will it be available at all? Remember, floodree does not offer cover in respect of homes built after 1st of January 2009 as from that date, houses should not be built in high flood risk areas. Yvonne Fenner has lived in Wyndham Crescent next to the applicant's site for thirty years and I summarise some of the issues mentioned by Yvonne. One, it appears that despite photographic evidence of flooding in that field and over the road, the experts still think due to their so-called models that this will not happen again. Two, as for Thames Water saying that the site will not be affected by odour smell, I disagree. We live near the sewage works and when the weather is hot, there is a smell which will only get worse with all the other new houses agreed to be built. There are also fly infestations in this area. Why don't planners listen to the people that actually live in the area? Cranly Civic Society had a meeting with Royal Sun Alliance, a leading home insurer in February 2015, and the insurer expressed their great concern about planning permission being granted for building on floodplains and other high-risk flood areas. RSA also confirmed that in circumstances where future flooding was entirely foreseeable when the applications were considered and then granted, it was totally unreasonable to rely on desktop study reports and ignore local knowledge. They will pursue their rights of recovery against the local authority concerned and/or the developer. Please remember, this will be an ongoing situation with more potential recovery claims arising every time further flooding... arising every time further flooding occurs. So our message to the members is please think carefully before you cast your vote tonight.
Mr Bryant, can you finish?
Thank you, I have now.
Counsel Friesman.
So we know this field floods. Members have now seen photographs of the flooding with the bridge adjacent to the site under what looks like about five centimetres of water. This bridge is, as we have now been told, 45 metres above sea level and the one-in-a-thousand flooding event, we are told by the experts, is at 45.89 metres above sea level. From the Leeds Local Flood Authority dated September the 19th, we get a reply to a member of the public which says that she accepts the comment in the letter of objection that the bridge over the Cranly Waters has flooded above the one-in-a-thousand-year level, but that is in line with the modelling. So these pictures, according to our Leeds Flood Authority, are therefore records of very remote occurrences. Yet, in the last 100 years, we have had two floods in the High Street, some five to 10 metres higher than this bridge. The 1968 flood in Cranly was quite rightly of concern to Waverley and lessons were learnt. Box culverts were built and ditches widened, all expressly designed to manage flooding and to pass it through Cranly east to west as quickly as possible into Cranly Waters. So exacerbating the strength and depth of flash flooding in the east. Of course, at that time, Cranly Waters was far from built-up, in far from built-up areas, not now though. Of course, we do have a tacit recognition that water is a problem here, as in mitigation houses will have floor levels some 30 centimetres above ground level or 60 centimetres above the one-in-a-thousand event. But this seems to be a mere afterthought and perhaps too little, too late. Something here is not quite right. The problem has been very much exacerbated by the upstream illegal dredging by the Knoll Park Initiative developers. This has been done without the knowledge or licences from the Environment Agency in order to push the flooding issue downstream, in this case, Thakum Homes. The flood modelling does not take account of this illegal dredging. I urge councillors to not only take account of the expert reports with the proviso that they are only as good as their input data, but also to give due weight to local knowledge. We know this field floods as we have seen it with our own eyes and all the indications are that it will get worse. The second point I would like councillors to consider is of odour. There is a real problem with the odour risk. In the OvArap report commissioned by Thames Water, it states that, to quote, "The results indicate that odour may be a constraint to residential development on the proposed site, with up to 95% of the proposed site predicted to fall within the 3OUE per cubic metre contour." Now, OvArap are world-renowned. It is this company you would go to for the top experts on hydraulic and sewerage engineering. So when they say there's a problem, then there's a problem. Do not listen to lesser experts who might say something to the contrary. You will no doubt be presented with other strong and significant reasons to object to this application. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Counsel Friesman. And now I call on Sophie Thorp.
Thank you, Chair and Committee, for accepting us back to committee this evening. My name's Sophia Thorp and I'm from Thakum Homes. Thank you for providing Thakum and our consultant team with the opportunity for you to consider our planning application once again this evening. As you know, Thakum-
I'm sorry. We can't hear her.
Oh, sorry. Shall we start again? Okay, yep, sorry. Sorry. Thank you for providing Thakum and our consultant team with the opportunity once more to bring this application to you. As you know, Thakum are a local house builder and we look forward to having the opportunity to deliver high-quality homes once again within your borough. You may recall that we completed a scheme in hindhead a couple of years ago, that I know some of you were able to come and visit with us. And we've most recently completed a highly regarded development nearby in Ridgwick, albeit that was in Horsham district. At Thakum, we strive to create a sense of place within our high-quality setting. Our objective is not only to develop 54 new homes with associated infrastructure on this site, but to provide 54 new homes for families who can enjoy living within one of your established communities. This scheme presents an opportunity for the delivery of mix of homes to suit those both purchasing their first home to climb the property ladder and also those wishing to downsize for their retirement, whilst also providing much-needed new affordable housing and making substantial Section 106 contributions towards wider infrastructure needs of Cranly and the borough. You may recall that previously you were most concerned with regard to flooding and odour. We've been working with your officers and have provided them with clarification on these points, which hopefully you will have understood this evening. We are confident that we have answered your concerns fully in relation to these two important issues and we understand your concerns, which is why we've been able to provide that clarification. And thank you once more for giving us this opportunity. We've been working very closely with your officers over the last 14 months and we wish to ensure that you are all content with the content of our planning application. We also hope that you understand this evening that we have addressed all of the issues that you deferred this application on back in June. We have demonstrated that the proposed homes will not be affected by flooding and will not be affected by adverse odour concerns. We respectfully request that committee follow the officer's recommendation this evening and resolve to grant full planning permission. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophie Thorp. Now call on Counsel Liz Townsend.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to clarify, I'm speaking as the Waverley Borough Councillor for Cranly West. I'm being given the opportunity to speak, but I'm not a voting member on the JPC. I'd like to also thank Chris and also Peter for answering a lot of queries that I've had on this site and I do appreciate their help completely. And I do welcome Condition 10 on the update sheet which sets the floor heights as well on this new property to 600 millimetres minimum. Thakum Homes talk about their high-quality housing and I find it a little bit difficult to understand when we have three-bedroom houses which are below the space standards. There are also, this site is sandwiched between a sewage treatment works and also a river which, from local knowledge, we all know the site does flood quite badly and regularly. As well as the space standards which have not been met, there are a number of trees, I believe, on this site which will also be affected and this is a tree protection area. With regards to the odour and the new odour reports on this site, I do grant it, there has been some work done on the Sewage Treatment Works recently. However, in July 2017, several members of the public complained to Thames Water and sent me copies of their complaints about odour problems at the Sewage Treatment Works. Thames Water have replied to these and just said there was no particular reason, it was just the daily business of the Treatment Works. There are odour problems from the Sewage Treatment Works, one can only expect that if one lives near to a Sewage Treatment Works. With regard to the sequential test which has been mentioned, the point of the sequential test is to move housing to areas of lesser flood risk. On the officer's report on page 44, it actually states that there is a sequentially preferred site, which is the Horsham Road site, which will deliver, I think it's 119 houses approximately, which obviously meets the housing on this site. So the sequential test, another site can accommodate this housing, it is sequentially preferable, therefore I cannot understand why the exception test has then been gone through. The exception test and wider sustainability criteria, I understand, can only be gone through once if there is no preferable site and in this instance, as I said, there is a preferable site on the Horsham Road that can accommodate this housing. Are we really looking at building housing on a site that is at flood risk, where the bedroom, three-bedroom houses don't meet space standards and also at the risk of losing more trees in Cranly as well? With regard to the flood risk on this site, and it is well-known to members and it does actually keep me awake at night, I'm very, very concerned about this site and building on it because of the position of the SUDs, which I believe still will be in flood zones too. I understand that more modelling has been done and I've looked at the 1D and 2D models, I understand that that is an estimate of flooding on that site. However, my own experience of this site and also other residents' experience tells another story and I am extremely concerned about the flood risk. There is an Environment Agency point outside the Rye Farm cottages which is set at 45.289 AOD, it's an Environment Agency benchmark. When the Wieldens were flooded, their expert in their report did actually state that the flooding rose to a minimum of 45.2. So I think we do have some disparity about the one-in-100 and one-in-1,000 flood zones. Thank you, Peter, sorry for going on, thank you. And can I reserve the right to come back later as well after the deliberations have been made?
Indeed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Members, this is a full planning application, just remind you of that. Can we now open it to debate?
Thank you, Chairman. Can I address my comments to gentlemen from Cannons and thank you for your explanation? This model, the first point is you say you base it on Environment Agency data. Could you give a little more background as to what that means?
Yes, so the Environment Agency say they hold a national model dataset, if you like. This is part of the Lower Way model, so what happens is you, they hold the model, there's a load of sub-models within it, 1D, 2D, one-dimensional, two-dimensional, and what you do is for a fee, you can take that model and then you can enhance it with best available data at that point in time. So in this instance, there was the Nuthurst stream, the Littlemead Brook and the Cranly Waters taken, so quite a large catchment around this site. That was enhanced by putting in the high-resolution LiDAR data, which is an update from their first, their first iteration of this model was done in 2009, so the data of the level and the landform increased and then you run through the latest predictions on flows and flow increases for climate change. So you know, as we see this increased seasonality and we see more and more flooding, more of this flashy flooding as well, of course, what used to be a one-in-a-hundred-year storm event is an ever-changing position, so we have a different set of probability parameters as well. So this was an August 2017 update, an enhancement of that Environment Agency model. That's now back with the Environment Agency and they update their flood maps on the back of the better information.
Thank you. Two questions from that. First of all, if the Environment Agency had been informed of flooding on that site, let's say all the way up, would that information itself alter their database and the data they were providing people such as yourselves with when you were using the model?
It's a very good point. The Environment Agency do hold historic flood records, but for a site like this, you know, how good will that record be? You know, they tend to get very good historic flood record data from existing communities that flood because of course you've got a whole wealth of people then reporting the flooding. In this location, their flood zone two, when they try and model an extreme flood event, they call that the extreme flood, if they know that it's flooded to a wider extent from photographic evidence or some such, they put a wider output for flood zone two. And in this instance, on the flood map, you get some funny spikes and floodwater and stuff which could have been driven by a historic flood event, so they do hold that information. But in reality, for this location, they didn't highlight to us and say, you know, we've got a real flood here that could be of this magnitude, this now needs to be tested as the highest event. The key thing about this location is, we mustn't forget that we've got a three-metre fall across the site, so when we plough more and more water into it, what you do is you get a very wide floodplain under just a one-in-20-year storm, very wide indeed, and so I don't dispute any of the frequency of flooding or what we see in these images. That's got a quite a high percent chance of occurrence in any one year, you'll see that. But as we add in, you know, the new climate change prediction, 70% increase in flow, that's just a reflection of the increased seasonality we see nowadays, you know, that only creeps a level up by another sort of 30 centimetres at best because we've got this sort of, this three-metre height differential, if you like, from the higher plateau where the houses are. So, I mean, going, looking at this drawing is quite a good example, but you see, we've got a whole wealth of lines very close together there, that's just adding 30, 35%, 70% flooding and you can see it doesn't increase in terms of scale of floodplain, just increases the depth.
Thank you. Now, the concern I've had is that, just as you rightly say, if people get their homes flooded, it tends to get noticed and reported. But if a field is flooded, no one cares and you can't blame the EEA for not having that information if no one's told them about it. What you've said about the impact of the slope is of some comfort because if you've got a wide enough floodplain, then I can appreciate the extra volume of water required to creep further up the slope is going to be very considerable indeed. There's no doubt that the residents, in making their concerns felt, are basing it on what they have seen of themselves. The other question, I don't know whether you had a chance to look at this, is given that the High Street is some five to 10 metres higher, is there any obvious barrier preventing a flash flood there making its way down here?
If, yes, I mean, picking up that point, I mean, what we have, very simplistic hydrology is water flows downhill. So what we have, of course, higher parts of the catchment, you know, if you put a hydraulic constriction in there, so before man were here and we developed all of these houses, we'd have lovely natural channels, natural floodplains and water would just naturally flow to the sea. That's the short of it. But with us putting in pipes and culverts and bridges and all of that, then that just creates hydraulic constrictions. So under modern-day storm events, it doesn't surprise me that higher up in the developed catchment, there will be constrictions that show themselves and you'll get flooding. But let's not confuse the flood levels upstream with the flood levels downstream because they don't translate straight the way across, water will always find its way down slope ultimately.
Thank you very much indeed. If I can turn to the other point, the one thing I was disappointed about, Mr Chairman, was to read on page 35, that the concerns the committee expressed about odour do not appear to have been addressed. If you look at the second large paragraph, it is clear that no additional surveying has taken place and the concern expressed by members and the local residents was that you want to be testing odour when the weather is a lot warmer than 14 degrees. What we seem to have is a further report saying 14 degrees in May is perfectly reasonable. Well, maybe it is, but June, July, August and September can be very much warmer months and it was my understanding from what I heard from residents that that was the time when they were concerned. So although I have been comforted to a large extent by what we've heard about the flood risk, I have to say that I was expecting that we would give the applicants a chance to have a further survey done during warmer weather and that has not happened. And I feel as that is certainly a very material consideration to residential amenity. It gives me a considerable problem about supporting the officer's recommendation on that ground alone. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Hyman.
Thank you, Chairman. I certainly share the last point, the concerns that's made by Councillor Molliner, his last point there in respect of not having received the further- his last point there in respect of not having received the further, uh, ODA modelling or testing that we had expected. I'm also quite disappointed with the, um, what I particularly wanted was a map showing the site with flood levels on it, with the contours on it and the, and the flood levels clearly, so that we could understand how the land sat and what difference, uh, different flood levels would make to the, to the site, what risk we were taking in, in, if we were granting consent to this, and we didn't get that. I did make one up myself, but apparently it can't be shown, I just drew pink lines on the contours of the, on the main, uh, diagram. I did speak to, um, Mr French, uh, case officer earlier and asked if it would be possible to have the flood risk assessment available, because there's some very important information in it, and it's on page eight, I wonder whether you could refer us to that, please, if you could take us to what is section two point two of the updated flood risk assessment. What that does is show us the, um, the old flood levels which applied at the June twenty-eighth meeting, uh, and then alongside them, the, what the new modelling has done, because my concern is that actually what it's done is says that this, uh, the, the risk of flooding is far less than, than we even thought it was back in June. So if we can have that up there, it's paragraph two point two, particularly there is a table on page eight of the flood risk assessment, if you can have that.
Uh, I think, ju- just to clarify what's on screen, I, I will hand over to the consultant Cannons, but wh- what we have on screen there is the previously, um, provided plan, ultimately, that you, you considered, um, before you, and what you had on the earlier screen, if Chris just scrolls back for me, is, is the updated modelling. Um, so I think that's what you're referring to, you want a comparison?
No, I'm referring to the table on page eight, if, if you would please have the flood risk updated.
I've got page eight, there's a hard copy in front of me, but we haven't got that in front of us on screen, but what we have shown you is the extract from the updated flood map, which is on screen before you, or the modelling before you, and then the, the one that was previously shown pri- sorry, prior to this further modelling. Um, I'll, I'll just pass over to the, um, the consultant from Cannons, just pick up any additional point on that. Thank you.
Okay, so that, that table for everyone's benefit, what it effectively does, um, which I think is the main crux of the point, is it shows a reduction in flood levels, effectively. So that, that goes back to the point I made earlier, that what we, in the absence of a hydraulic model, a site-specific two-dimensional hydraulic model, what we do is we take this precautionary approach, and this is what the first version of the flood risk assessment did. Now, that precautionary approach was to take an upstream flood level, um, which was an in-channel flood level at the confluence of the Littlemead Brook and Cranley waters, and that was a level of forty five point eight nine metres AOD, and then we just, we just transcribe that over the site, um, and we use that for master planning purposes where we don't have any more accurate data in absence. So it's always going to be conservative, because you're always taking an upstream flood level, it's never going to, uh, truly display itself downstream, but that's what you have to do when you don't have the resolution of data we now have. How that translates on the table for everyone's benefit is that forty five point eight nine has now become forty five point three, when you transcribe it to a site-specific flood level. I think, um, if we could just have a quick look in terms of that cross-section plan, this is, this might, there it is, this might, this might help you a little bit, so what, what we're looking at there, a couple of sections through the site, the top one, you'll see the Littlemead Brook on the very far right-hand side, and then you can see those blue lines, they are the one-in-a-hundred-year floodlines, and then with the additional climate change of thirty-five percent increase and seventy percent increase, and you can see how those top flood levels relate to the proposed dwellings, uh, and the attenuation basin. And then section BB down the bottom there, that's just another section cut from Cranley waters, again, transposing those flood levels across the landform and looking at the relationship of the dwellings to the flood levels, and again, that helps show the three-metre elevational difference from the edge of the site to the, um, top of the site.
Thanks, that wasn't really what I was asking, but, um, if we go back to what the table tells us at, at paragraph two point two, which, uh, I, I'm quite sure that there should be some sort of, uh, technology available where perhaps we could look at it on the web or something and put it up there, but apparently not. Uh, this, this table tells that the one-in-one-hundred, um, period, um, one-one-hundred event has been reduced from, uh, forty five point four eight metres above ordinary statum to forty four point nine four, so we're looking half a metre, we're now saying it's going to flood half a metre less than previously, and as you've told us there, the one-in-a-thousand event, um, is reduced from forty five point eight nine to forty five point three metres. Now, uh, you have kindly, Rick, you kindly addressed the photograph, which has been doing the rounds for a long time and is on the Cranley Society's webpage, that shows the bridge, you, you ran through it and you tied it into the topological survey very kindly for us. Um, I'd done that myself and I had sent out a document with that in there, um, showing that, you, you can see that the level from the topo survey of those footpaths either side of the bridge are forty five point oh seven metres AOD, I'm sure you'd agree with that. Um, and you can see that there isn't three or four inches of footpath showing, there is just maybe a centimetre to a footpath, the highest, very highest part. Um, I think the accurate, most accurate that we can say, given the tolerances that you have in, uh, throughout all of this modelling and, and the topo work, uh, is, is the level of that water at that time of that photograph and on Christmas Eve 2013 was forty five point oh five, it's just a tad less than forty five point oh seven. If it was forty five, you'd have three inches of curb or something showing there, you'd be able to see that it was at that level. So if we start with forty five oh seven, which is the level that we know that photograph was taken at, and then if we look in closely, and I did send the, the, um, uh, high-resolution version of that photograph through this afternoon, uh, just in case we were to need it, if you look closely, you can see that on posts, you can see flood debris or detritus on the fencing, you, if you look at the brickwork on the, um, substation there, you can see that, um, you can be pretty certain that nine inches more of water had, uh, been there. That ties in quite nicely with what councillor Townsend told us about the consultant for the cottages for their insurance purposes, saying that it had flooded to at least forty five point twenty, forty five point two zero at that time, because, uh, I'm sure you'd agree that, uh, nine inches is two, twenty-two and a half centimetres, three bricks, nine inches, twenty-two and a half centimetres. Uh, we know that the water did rise higher than the forty five oh five that we'd already agreed is at the photo, therefore, that must have been forty five twenty-eight or above, at least forty five twenty-eight is the level it rose to at the bridge. And I think you'll also agree that if you look at their nodes, uh, the Environment Agency documentation, which, um, I, I think is in a table somewhere around that section two point two, um, says that the, the level at the node at the confluence of Littlemead Brook and Cranley waters is fifteen centimetres higher than at the bridge, so you add that on and you get forty five forty-three. So you know, within your tolerances, that forty five forty-three is a level at which that, uh, flood event reached on the site in, uh, 2013. Now, you're telling us, according to your new super modelling, that the one-in-a-thousand level is six inches lower than that. So the event back in twenty thirteen, twenty fifteen, uh, twenty thirteen, sorry, um, the, the one-in-a-thousand-year event is actually lower than the event we witnessed at that Christmas. Um, you're saying that the, your flood zone in, in which you must not place any, um, suds, flood zone three, up to one-in-a-hundred event, is forty five point two, that's the, that's what you're working on. Um, but it flooded to forty five point four three, as we know from the photographs and from the topo maps and all the information that's provided here in the documentation. So I can't support this, because I feel like that this is just being fiddled, we've had something put in front of us that's gone the wrong way and, um, to try and make the suds look good. You can't put suds in flood zone three. I simply can't support this. Um, I'd like you to come back and show me that I'm wrong on any of that, on the fifteen-centimetre allowance for moving the node from the bridge to the, uh, to the site, or you've already yourself confirmed that that is, uh, where, where the flood level's taken from. So if you wouldn't mind confirming that you have indeed set the ones, the one-in-a-hundred and one-in-a-thousand levels lower than what was, uh, experienced in 2013, um, you know, I don't know where to go with this, I, I just see it's grand dog day and I'm very disappointed. Thank you, chairman.
Uh, thank you, councillor. Um, we'll move straight on, I think, councillor Foraski.
Uh, thank you, chairman. Um, where do I start? Um, there's a few things I do like about this application, and one of those things is that it's a full application, so we don't have to determine them separately, and the second is that the line shares of the financial contributions seem to remain in Cranley, which, um, I think is good news. Sadly, that's where it ends, because if we come back to the hardcore of the application, I think the observations and the comments made by Cranley Parish Council and our local ward members, it, it is local knowledge. We live in this area, we've, we've seen the effect and we've seen the consequences of it, and I'm blinded by the science in here this evening, I'm not an expert, so it makes no sense to me in any way, shape or form of what you're actually saying to me, so I have to take as gospel what you're saying. But what I would say is that a resident, as a resident, I live maybe a mile, three-quarters of a mile for this site, from this site, and in 2014, 15, my workplace was flooded and my garage and some of my outbuildings were flooded, so there is a real issue, and since that time, we've had incidences of reoccurring flooding, and I think that comes from a number of issues, because if we talk about the hydraulic approach, I think it was described, I would imagine any approach to flooding has to be one that, um, has the cooperation of private landowners, commercial landowners, and anybody within a, a yard or two of, um, a gully or something that needs clearing, because all of this is great, but it's very dependent on everybody contributing to make sure that that water flows. Now, the one problem I have with this field is what we're saying, and I'm looking at it very much from layperson's terms and as a local resident and a borough councillor, is what we're saying is it's okay to have houses further up that don't flood, but you're creating an island around them, because the waterbase level is around the area. So it, even by hiring the floors, we're not getting away from the fact, I mean, I would like to see that it's, it's not in an area at all that is subject to flowing, uh, floodwaters in any way, shape or form, but, and also, this site has served as an attenuation pond for Cranley for a number of years, or field, should I say. So what's going to happen to the water that's currently there when it does flood? Where's that water going to go? So I think that's an issue as well, because throw as much jargon as you want, but I don't understand, knowing the local area, that that is an attenuation pond, not by, not by purpose, but just by pure definition. But I think that we could get really hooked on to, um, some of the issues that we've talked about here, but I think there's a much greater worry for me here, and that is the cumulative effect. I know we can't look at applications, um, alongside others, but it was mentioned by the officer in terms of the KPI, and the KPI is, uh, is near, but it's not closed, now it has no resemblance to it at all, but what it does have in common, as much of the applications that we've seen in Cranley and the green fields haven't been lost, is a loss of our agricultural land. So we've got an attenuation pond, a loss of our agricultural land. I, I also think that the housing, if we as a, as a councillor are saying that we're going to have a, a space size standard that is not suitable, then I think that gives out the wrong message to the type of housing that provides to the people who wants to come and live in places like this. Coming back to local knowledge, if we look at the parking and highways issue and the issue of safety, I mean, you, you've got to walk along that stretch of road and go along that one-way bridge and find out just how difficult it is, so you are putting out another fifty-four houses with all the cars that go with it onto that single road with no footpaths in a floodplain, that's totally unsustainable, because whilst it is not that far from the village settlement, it is outside, which is why it has never been developed in the past. I do believe it's got impact on residential amenity, and as I say, the, for me, there is so much wrong about this application, it should never be before us, the sequential test needs to be looked at in far more detail, because I think in this case here, it, we have not satisfied the sequential test, there are other places in Cranley that could have accommodated the housing without putting it in a zone that is of high risk, and as I go back to what I said, no matter how much jargon you throw, as a local resident, I personally and many, many residents in and around me know the effect of local flooding and what it can do, no one can predict what climate change is about to bring upon us, but what we do know is we have a responsibility to ensure that when we're building houses, we do so in a deliverable, sustainable location. And as an officer told me when this first came to the table, it was going to be one that was most unlikely to get permission for that very reason, because of its unsustainable location, so other reasons have come into effect as to why we are now considering this site. I think we should go back to the drawing board. I for one could not commit the residents of Cranley to a site that I don't see fit for purpose. Thank you for listening, chairman.
Thank you. Let's make a point that the site is part of the strategic allocation in our draft local plan, which has been before the inspector and we await his words of wisdom. Councillor Holder.
Uh, thank you, chairman. I refer you to paragraph five on page twenty-one, where it is stated, it is accepted that the site, due to its isolated nature in relation to the surrounding fields, and because the part of the site falls within flood zones two and three, would limit its use for agricultural purposes. If Mr Stovall finds that he can't harvest his crops because his tractor's getting bogged down, I can't see how the developer could possibly build houses, it was soon as he tries to put in foundations, he hits the water. Uh, it seems to me this is appropriate, inappropriate site and I'm afraid I can't support it.
Thank you. Um, there's a couple of points which have, I think, have been accepted in the report about its countryside beyond the Greenbell, the loss of agricultural land, it's been mentioned, and outside the defined settlement. Um, if I could just refer to pages twenty-two and twenty-three, and this talks about the housing mix, and I'm disappointed that the one and two-bedroom, which our recommendation is at least fifty percent, is thirty-six point nine. I mean, I think we've all accepted the two-bedroom are probably the most important for Cranley to be built, so I think that's extremely disappointing that that hasn't happened. Um, moving on, if I can just turn to page thirty-three, where we have a table of the proposed square meterage, and I think there are fifteen lines and eight are failures. And again, I think that is extremely disappointing. When you look at the, um, square meterage for, I think it's a two-bedroom, it should be, um, ninety-three, it's eighty-two. So if we accept eighty-two in another meeting, are we going to accept seventy-five or seventy? My view has always been, if there is a recommendation or something that we work to, and that is ninety-three, we should work to that. I think it's disappointing that they've made those houses of that size. Um, I have to admit, uh, I was slightly confused with some of the figures, but I'm not really sure councillor Hyman actually got a, an answer to his question, so I'm not sure in my own mind now whether the levels, um, that councillor Hyman has, has raised are correct, and if they're correct, what does that actually now mean to the figures being put forward, or whether those figures are incorrect and the figures are, um, that we should be taking tonight are what the consultant has said. So I am a little bit confused on what is reality, and I would like an answer to that question. And I would agree with what councillor Townsend has said, I'm not an expert in sequential testing, but reading the, um, the papers and what needs to be met and in what circumstances, I can't see that sequential test has been met, but again, if, if I've got that wrong, I'd be happy for someone to, to highlight that to me. That's it for the time being, thank you, chair.
Thank you very much indeed. Can I ask Rick Topman to reply to councillor Hyman? Uh, he is the expert, I don't know that councillor Hyman is a hydraulic, uh, Whisker.
I can look at photographs and topos and, and add the things together and I can add up, thank you, chairman.
Thank you.
Okay, going back to the-
Okay, going back to the, there was a lot of flood levels thrown out in that section. What I did pick up and what I wrote down, 45.2 seems to have been a residence recollection of flooding in the area.
No, Chairman, may I correct that?
Wait, please.
So 45.2 was thrown in the mix there. But fundamentally, what we need to think about is that image, the pertinent point made, was that that's an image of flooding. We don't know what return period storm that is, and we don't know whether it's at its peak or not at its peak. So picking up nuances like watermarks, and you know, if the watermark was another 150mm up, it could well have been, and that could have been the peak storm there, that could have been fine. In terms of the levels over the bridge, the exposed bit of footway I can see is actually at 45.01, not at 45.07. So there's a larger section of exposed footway. But just however much we argue over what a photo shows and what the flood level is, we probably need to remind ourselves of exactly where this housing sits and the floor levels and the elevation that that is. In relation to all of those levels, we're always talking about a higher development platform. So I think the other key point to pick up in, when we were looking at higher flood levels in the flood risk assessment that came with the application, that was because we were just doing a precautionary approach, picking up the highest flood level that we could pick out on-site and transposing it across the site. That same model, that was just for everyone's benefit, that was actually 45.89. Out of that same model, if you actually pick the upstream and downstream road bridge levels, they're actually 45.29. So whether it's 45.2, 45.29, 45.3, you know, out of all of that, we're all in the same ballpark. There's no huge game changer that suddenly means the whole development site as proposed is underwater.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Frost, first of all.
Thank you, I thought you probably had loads of people waiting to speak. I'm not going to get involved in the flooding issue or the ODA issue, because we do have to consider the design as well and the layout. And I want to go back to what Councillor Dinas has just said. I wasn't quite sure which way I was going to vote on this application. But it does seem to me that we really cannot expect people to live in houses which do not meet the design standard. And we have on that table there a number of houses which fall short. And having moved recently, well, recently, a year ago, I still can't get my court into a pint pot. And I think you're going to find people moving into these, if we don't at least give them the design standard, it's going to be a problem for them. And I think it's unacceptable that Fakenham Homes have designed these buildings not meeting the design standard. I'm not interested in what the local plan says, because I'm just saying that the technical housing space standards are not met in some of these homes. And that, for me, puts me off what is happening on this site as far as houses are concerned. If we move to the design of houses, there was the big block. Could we go back to, is it plot 22? That's the one. Why have we got flagpoles on the top of the eaves? They just look so twee, so out of keeping. That for me, that is not a good design. You know, I just can't see it. So I have some issues about design, and I have some issues about standards for people living, and we should give them good quality standards. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Bynum.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just briefly like to go back to the flooding issue, in the sense that we're talking about an isolated site. We talk about the floods that have happened in the past and therefore think what might happen in the future. But we're not talking about in any way the wider area where that water is going to go. For instance, we're talking about a bridge which goes over what is a redundant or empty canal bed, which they wish to rejuvenate. What other things are going to be done between there and Shamley Green and then to Bramley, and then, of course, into Guildford? We haven't got any information, I don't think, on any of those things. For instance, in Bramley, I have a meeting next week, and we are very concerned about flooding, because we've had flooding in some of our houses, as of course has Godalming and other places. And we're working hard to find ways around that. We're looking at all sorts of things with regard to water courses. Now, I'm not suggesting, I don't think, that Fakenham Homes are the ones that are responsible for that, but we as an organisation, an authority and everybody else ought to be looking at, understanding if we are already doing it, what we do with regard to floods. It's not a static situation. Hopefully, it's going to get better. And certainly in Bramley, we're fighting to get things done. Whether we achieve that or not, I don't know yet. And by the way, Way and Aaron Canal were very helpful in what we're doing. But we're just talking about what happened in 2013, what happened in 1968. I can't remember what the difference is here. I know what it was in Bramley, and I know what the difference was in Guildford, but I don't know what the differences were here. I don't think we understand the flooding problem enough to actually make a judgment, other than the fact we're talking about houses, which notwithstanding the comments about them not up to the right standard, which I can have sympathy for, great sympathy for, but they are going to be higher than the flooded area, and therefore it's going to be different. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councillor Stewart's tenet, and must say, welcome back, nice to see you, sir.
My colleague there has just made a very good point. As those of you know me, I've had my business in Cranley for 50 years, and in the early days, that was involved in flooding and drainage. And we are not looking at the wider element of where the water goes. And we all know that that field floods, so where does it go? But we should be looking at the wider infrastructure and doing something about the whole drainage further down. And quite rightly, what Councillor Bynum says, flooding Bramley, flooding Guildford, it should be controllable. All of these developments don't take that into account. And the other point I'd like to make, the tolerances on the expert friend there, which I respect what you say and thank you for what you've done, it's too tight. The houses are too small. Why are we worrying about this site when there are better sites available? I'm afraid, with the best will in the world, I can't support this either. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Chairman. It's only water. There's a flood, but it's only water. Yeah, as you mentioned earlier, this is a site in the local plan. So people have been well aware of it for now months. And so they shouldn't be surprised that it's come forward for planning permission. I could understand the requirement to delay it for further information in June, July, whenever it was. I wasn't around at that particular time. But it seems to me that a lot of work has been done since that original delay. And I listen to the locals, obviously. There's been floods here. I hear Mr Hyman, who, Councillor Hyman, sorry, who has done lots of detailed calculations. But I'm inclined to agree with the consultants who actually know what they're doing. Now, there is another, of course, and Councillor Senat has just raised the issue of the wider picture. Well, there's been since 2013, when the major floods occurred, which also included Godalming, there has been a group within Waverley, which is sponsored by Jeremy Hunt and Anne Milton, which has been looking at resilience across the borough as a whole. Lots of money has been spent on duplicating electrical supplies. And as part of the flood issues, the way has been significantly remanaged. So it's been dredged, it's got different electronic controls that control the water levels, water flowing down the way. It takes a larger capacity than it did before. So the downstream is being worked on as we speak. The sequential test, I'm not sure which site they're talking about, but if they were talking about the second layer of the crest development in Horsham Road, then obviously that is also in the local plan. And that also will be coming up for planning permission. So it's not a substitute for this, it's in addition to this. Sizes, right, yeah, there is a question over the sizes. And we are certainly encouraging all developers to recognise the sizes that we have to implement in our social housing. But that is not a legal requirement as yet, although it's likely to be, I think, when the new Housing Act actually goes through. In the meantime, of course, there is a question of cost. If you make a three-bedroom house a bit smaller than another three-bedroom house, then you can actually sell it for a little less money. And bearing in mind that people are being restricted by mortgage allocations now, and it's more difficult to get a mortgage, there is a case for saying that some smaller houses should be allowed so that people can afford them. As far as this being an isolated site, I can't agree with that. It's bang next door to the Cranley boundary. It's clearly not isolated. It's got a link through to it. So I will be supporting this, the officers in this application.
Thank you. Councillor Nasen.
Sorry. I'm not an expert on planning on this water part, but as living near the Syritch Works, I would say what the people are saying, the order always comes, and same Thames Water has been saying that there's no order. I think Stephen lives not far from me as well, and he has the same problem. And people coming to Sainsbury's as well, and the fly infestation is there. So if they are complaining about order, order will be there. And are we going to give houses to people who are going to live in fly infestation and order? I would not support it, I'm sorry.
I'll come back then to Councillor Frost.
Chairman, it's just a small comment, really. I've listened to what Councillor Adams has said, but I don't think that cost is a planning requirement. Should we be discussing the cost of people buying a house? My concern is that we're giving the smaller houses to people who want affordable housing. And they are below standard. And I think that is something we have to bear in mind. Now, with a couple less houses on site, they can probably make the houses the proper size. But of course, there is development, people wanting whatever they can get out of a development. But I do not agree with houses, particularly affordable homes, being less than the normal specification. And I don't think the cost of selling them is a part of this planning matter.
Thank you. I can ask, first of all, Peter Cleveland to talk about this sequential test, but I think ahead of planning, Elizabeth Sims would like a word first.
Thank you, Chairman. I was going to let Peter pick up the points in the first instance, but I did want to come back in relation to the space standards and to clarify the advice we have given you on occasion before, but it's really important, having regard to the amount of discussion that's going on about these. And it's really to support what Councillor Adams has quite rightly said, that at present, this is just guidance. This is material consideration for you to take into account. But it is not your policy, because you don't have it linked to a policy in your plan. Now, that process will follow in Local Plan Part Two, but currently, you can't rely on it in terms of being a breach of policy. And therefore, it is informing your judgment. But I was getting a little bit concerned about the emphasis that's being placed on it, because I think to reject this application on the basis categorically that it doesn't meet some of the guidance standards would, I think, be regarded as unreasonable on appeal. I think it'd be much better to consider in the round whether the scheme and the sizes that are being proposed are broadly in compliance, which our point is, of course, as you see in the report, that they are, and whether or not in its entirety, the scheme does provide a standard of accommodation which is acceptable broadly for the prospective occupiers. And I think you need to see it in a much more general way, because to be too categorical about saying it fails by a few square metres, I don't think would be supported on appeal. And I think the position at this point in time would be regarded as unreasonable. So I did feel I needed to point that out quite clearly. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. And sequential test, Peter Cleveland.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So, reading through the report, you'll see that officers do set out that there is a sequentially preferable site, and that is the Phase Two Horsham Road, which I think Councillor Adams specifically referred to. However, over and above the delivery of that site, which is currently proposing 119 units, additional housing delivery as set out in the draft local plan is required for Cranley. So even if that was delivered, additional sites are required to meet that need. So officers have sort of taken a wider interpretation of the policy test for applying sequential tests. There is aspects that you can apply sequential tests where you would just apply it to the site. And if that was the case, if you're applying just purely to the confines of the site, it would comply with sequential tests. So ultimately, the underlying aim of the sequential test is to locate all new development within lowest risk of flood. And that is what you're getting based from the information that we've had provided as to where the flood zones are. So all development is located in flood zone one. And that's why we felt going for this sequential test, notwithstanding there is one sequentially preferable site, we can move through to the exception test to allow that assessment. So I would also add that the sequential test could actually be circumnavigated in this application by an amendment to the red line. Ultimately, that could just take out the bottom corner of that site, and that would take the site out of the, outside of the application red edge. And I think in practical terms, that would achieve very little in what you're assessing, because the underlying aim is to put development in flood zone one. So I think we do need to take into account of that as additional circumstances over and above the hard and fast sequential test process. And that is a material consideration, I think, that's relevant for you. So therefore, taking the requirement for the additional housing need, plus all the development being located in flood zone one, officers consider the approach to the sequential test and the exception test is appropriate. I appreciate that does take you into account of other material considerations, but we've got to be looking at the wider impact of the development and the underlying objective of policy requirement is met, I consider. There was two other points of just, I'll have to finish off on. Just to clarify, the site is not an allocation within the draft local plan. I just want to make that clear. There's reference in the report to the site to the south, which is SS5, which is Noel Park site and the wider Barclays, which is the allocated site. But this isn't allocated in the local plans, Part One. So that's just a point of factual update. And I'll just touch again on the ODA surveys. Chris went through it at the beginning and set out where we are. And I know there's some disappointment that further surveys haven't been carried out. However, what we have got is a clearer position from the applicants about when they carried those works out, that they were carried out under the sort of, Thames Water were instructed on behalf of and oversaw those ODA surveys being carried out. They've been assessed by our own Environment Health officers. Obviously, Thames Water have been reconsulted against them, and they think they, all the advice we're receiving is the surveys carried out were representative and appropriate. It's not reasonable to require further information if we have that advice, and they have carried out appropriately. So we haven't insisted upon that additional information, and I don't think we reasonably can, based on that clarification. So hopefully, that is of assistance, and thank you, Chairman.
Just one point on Peter's analysis of the sequential test and the ability to apply it in perhaps a more flexible way than advocated by certain... and the ability to apply it in perhaps a more flexible way than advocated by certain members is to draw the attention of committee to the decision of the inspector on the Barclay Land site in Cranley, Orford Road, where she was directed by Cranley Civic Society to council's opinion of Stephen Wayne of Landmark Chambers, who set out that his advice was that the sequential test had to be applied in a very rigid sequential way. And the inspector considered all of that. She took a far more flexible and holistic approach and she applied the exceptions test and concluded under the Planning Balance appraisal, which set out some length and I'm not going to quote from it in detail, but she considered the benefits of allowing that particular development would significantly demonstrably outweigh its adverse impacts. It would amount to sustainable development and bring wider sustainability of benefits to the community. The exceptions test would thus be fulfilled. And other sites were being put before her for her consideration to qualify in over and above the appeal site in terms of the application of sequential test. So there we have an inspector looking at the application of these paragraphs in the MPPF to a site in Cranley two years ago and applying it in a holistic, flexible way. And I think that bears out Peter's advice to committee. Thank you to Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Cleveland. Counselor Goodridge?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I mean, this is a difficult application, clearly. And I suppose it forms in two broad sections. Firstly, the technical advice that we have. I have to be, I am satisfied, having heard all the advice being given in the report and the verbal advice today, that really we haven't got a good reason that would stick to refuse the application for technical reasons. Because the only one that is, in my mind, was slightly dubious was we haven't had the ODA test redone, but we've had advice that it was done in accordance with recognised procedure, recognised time and so on. It's a shame it wasn't done in heatwave in July, but I'm told that it was done in the right window of when it should have been done. And therefore, on the technical side, we have a problem, I think, if people want to refuse it. And I'm satisfied myself that there aren't any technical reasons. And we were told that at the beginning of the meeting, that there weren't any technical reasons. It's been challenged, we've cross-examined the poor officer's concern and my view hasn't changed. One then has to look as to general policy of, as the site is outside the defined settlement, conflicting with Policy C2 and everything that is set out, particularly in the conclusions on page 50, with a presumption in favour of sustained development. It should be granted unless adverse impacts in doing so would significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits. So it's the Balancing Act situation. And I have to say that on balance to start with, I was thinking, well, I'm not quite sure, bearing in mind of other things that have been mentioned, whether the benefits outweigh the breach. But then if you take into account that this council's granted planning for a site, I think, south of here, it was mentioned near the beginning of the presentation, it does, exactly, on the land cutted blue on that plan, we've granted permission. It seems to me that that is a significant fact which one has to weigh up as well. And that on balance, as things stand at the moment, I am feeling just that, in view of the fact that there are no technical reasons to refuse it, in my view, and on the Balancing Act, I think, because of the blue development, I think we're in a difficult position to refuse it in the Balancing Act procedure. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. Counselor Hyman, you want to come back? Have you got some new points, please?
Thank you, Chairman. I set out the evidence that the flood level in the FRA, the flood levels given in the FRA are wrong, that they're impossible, that actually supposedly this event that we had in 2013 was above the one in a thousand year event. It never happens. What happened in 2013 never happens and it's, we've got photographic evidence. I mean, it is very simple. I think we should run through it again because the conclusion, the only conclusion you can draw from what is in the photographs and the topographical survey is that the one in a hundred flood level and one in a thousand are far higher than is stated in the flood risk assessment, far higher than shown on the plans and that the SUDs, the attenuation ponds, cannot be placed in the flood zone three, less than one in a hundred year event. And so this cannot be built as designed and we can't grant consent to it. So I think if I may, for the benefit of the portfolio holder for flooding, it's, I might have to put it more simply so that he understands it. This is, we've got to add up some numbers here. We start off with the 4505. Can I please have up on there? And we'll get his agreement all the way through, three stages. The water in the photos at 4505, he can confirm that by looking at it. He can confirm that the damp marks and the, and the diteritis in the photograph shows an extra nine inches or so and we can show.
You said it once.
Well, it's true. So how are people just turning around and denying that what we've got here is a complete denial of the facts? That we have photographs showing, we can see that the flood levels put on there are wrong. We can see that it's impossible because the one in a thousand level that we are meant to be working to is lower than what was experienced in 2013, Chairman.
Fine, we've heard your view.
But you won't allow me to prove it to you, Chairman?
We have heard the expert, that's why we called him in here.
And you're ignoring the facts, Chairman. I should make a complaint. Thank you, Chairman.
I'm not ignoring the facts whatsoever. Your, I'm not going to go through it, I'm not an expert. I take the word of the expert and the lead local flood authority. They are the people who I must turn to.
You're not listening to facts and look at photographs, Chairman? Or you're not going to allow us to because you don't want the truth out? I mean, we need to know here, Chairman, what's going on here.
No, no, please, that's enough, I've heard enough.
Chairman, any minute now, I am going to move that the recommendation be now put because we cannot go through this again. A meeting after meeting, Counselor Hyman, who does a lot of work on all these planning applications, implies our experts are liars. And I will not sit here as a member and have that happen.
Thank you very much indeed for that. Counselor Forreski?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I agree with Counselor Goodridge that we are very much between a rock and a hard place. But I would not be discharging my duties as a councillor correctly if I was not to bring what's so important to this table, which is that local knowledge. We're trying here to fit a square peg into a round hole and what we're trying to do here is, this is not planned development, it's not planning, it's not plan-led, it's developer-led. When we are saying as a council, and I absolutely agree with Counselor Frost, that we will accept eight out of 15 as failing the space standard, we are saying that we will accept a lower standard in order to allow developers to dictate to us what we do in this chamber. We are better than that, absolutely better than that. And the key to all of this is that there are no benefits, in my opinion, to this site, especially in view of the fact that we have over 800 granted applications in Cranley of some 30% of that 800 total is affordable houses that allows for the space that is a decent standard for people to live in. So what is it about this site that we're trying to cram all these houses on? We're prepared to say it's an island, it doesn't matter, they're not going to flood, but around it will. And yet at the end of the day, we, come on, we can do better than that. We should be dictating to what the developer says, not the other way around. And just because we have a site here, and talk about the sequential test as much as you want, but we've got a site here that is known to flood. And I go back to my point, what's going to happen? Because it's acted as an attenuation pond for years and years and years. We can do better. By saying we accept this, we're saying, we're not doing the people of Cranley or anybody coming to Cranley justice, we're saying we'll give you lower housing standard because it's developer-led, not waverly-led. We need to lead this, we need to set the standard and we need to be clear in this chamber that a generation who's going to move into that when we're long since gone will pick up the pieces of what we're deciding here tonight. Thank you, Chairman, for letting me come back.
Thank you. And Counselor Monle, you want to come back?
Thank you very much, Chairman. I had a quick question for Elizabeth Sims. I take her point about the design standards, but would she agree that we can take this into account as impacting residential amenity?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I mean, it's certainly a material consideration for you to weigh into the planning balance. But the point I was trying to make is, I got the impression that with some of the comments that were being made by members, that this is becoming a standalone issue that simply because there was a failure to adhere to the standard in inverted commas, that in itself should mean a rejection of the planning application. And because of where we are with this guidance, my advice to you, that is with respect, too simplistic. There has to be a much more measured assessment of whether or not in the round this proposal does provide accommodation of a reasonable standard to meet amenity. And I think to be disregarding it on the basis of a failure in some few cases, not to meet what is just guidance at this stage, would, in my view, not be a reasonable reason for refusal as a standalone reason. So that's why I made the point I did. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. One thing wasn't discussed and I noticed that Peter referred to it as the weighted balance in the document, the tilted balance. I was under the impression, no doubt wrong, that all that mattered was whether we had a five-year housing land supply, which we are claiming that we do. Can you just go into more detail why we have to apply the tilted balance? And if we have doubts about the sustainability of the site, does that not come first? Because if you don't think it's sustainable, then the tilted balance wouldn't seem to be relevant.
Peter?
So, just to pick up, I mean, officers consider it to be sustainable, so that's our advice, but that's something for members to consider. But I won't quote the case law and Barry can pick that up if you want the specific case law, but the intention is, is not to apply whether the site's sustainable and then apply the presumption in favour. The presumption is there, you don't do that two-stepped process. So it does apply and the reason it does apply is because there's a Policy C2, which is the countryside protection policy, which we refer to, protection of the countryside, is not fully up to date and in compliance with the wording and objectives of the MPPF. So it is considered out of date on that basis. And because it conflicts with the wording of the MPPF, the presumption, against that policy, the presumption in favour does apply.
So that doesn't, I'm puzzled because that's just one policy. We could have all sorts of reasons for objecting to an application. Now, I'm talking about when does the tilted balance apply? And I thought it was whether we had or not a five-year housing land supply.
Chairman, if I could help here, and I think we will invite Barry to contribute if he can, there's been a whole body of case law in the last year which has dealt with this particular issue because I think the government recognises the MPPF introduced this concept and just by the debates we've had in this chamber about this statement, it hasn't been an easy one for planning authorities to grapple with. Spectres have been taking a different view as to what the tilted balance actually is and how you define a sustainable development. But before I ask Barry to confirm the current up-to-date Supreme Court judicial authority on it, I think the easiest way to describe my understanding of how you come to the conclusion whether development is sustainable is you apply the policies in the MPPF to the proposal and clearly proposals will have merits and limitations and you'll come to the conclusion at the end of the exercise that you will need to weigh up the benefits against the harms and that is the ordinary balancing exercise. Where you have a situation where, as Peter has explained, you have out-of-date policies which are relevant to the application. In this case, Policy C2 is, we acknowledge, out-of-date. The most recent case law has acknowledged, it's not just about the five-year housing land supply, it's about applying the test of are your policies up to date? And in this particular instance, we have to acknowledge while we're of the view we do have a five-year housing land supply, relevant policies to this application are out of date and therefore the tilted balance does apply in this case. So you have your balancing exercise, you're weighing up your harms against your benefits. But because this is a housing development and housing is a form of sustainable development, you need to apply the tilted balance in favour in terms of that balancing exercise. So I hope that's helped, but that's my understanding of where we are with the case law on here. But Barry may correct me.
I hope I'll be able to clarify. So normally, the presumption of development under section 38 of the relevant legislative planning compulsory purchase act, presumption of development is called the straight balance and that is that development is presumed to be granted unless material considerations dictate otherwise. The tilted balance is a balance more in favour of development and that tilted balance applies where the development plan is absent, silent or relevant policies are out of date. And this Policy C2 is regarded as being out of date. The housing land supply comes into play. If you're looking at, the policies in question include policies for the supply of housing and C2 is not, as I understand it, considered to be a policy for the supply of housing. So as we have a five-year housing land supply, it's our position, if this was, the consideration was of a policy for the supply of housing, then we would not apply the tilted balance. But as it is not a policy for the supply of housing, we do apply the Para 14 tilted balance, which is a balance more in favour of development than the normal straight balance under section 38.
Thank you very much. Sorry, the comeback is, I thought we'd said that because this application site was outside the settlement boundary, not only was it against Policy C2, and I accept the caveats about C2, but it's also against the MPPF. And if that is correct, I fail to see how we have to apply the tilted balance if one of our reasons could be simply that it's not in compliance with the MPPF.
Chairman, just to answer that, I don't think it's as simple as saying it's not in compliance with the MPPF because the MPPF clearly is a document which contains a whole range of planning policies and our report has sought in the normal way to set out the relevant material considerations and where the proposal complies with those policies and where it does not. So there are some areas of tension which we've pointed out and one of those is it is in the open countryside. But for the reasons we've also set out, we don't feel that it creates such harm to the character of the countryside to warrant, in the officer's view, refusal. But that is a judgement. So it is the weighing up of all considerations against the MPPF. It's not a simple case, Chairman, of just saying it's contrary to the MPPF. So I hope that that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The last point, Chairman, is simply that, one thing that came out, I think, after I first spoke, was that there had been complaints about ODA in July 7, 17. And certainly in my view, that adds a residential amenity argument, that the extra work done on ODA simply avoided worrying about what happened in July and I am very troubled by that. It seems to me completely disregarding the request made by this committee and the concerns of the local residents. And just to provide an evidence saying, well, you've complied technically, is not a complete answer, in my view. And I think in terms of residential amenity, we should be entitled to take the fact that we are not certain that this site will avoid creating an ODA problem when we have evidence from residents that it has this summer.
Before we go to the recommendation, I've got Counselors Townsend to come back and then I'll ask the officers and then we'll go to the recommendation.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. First of all, I appreciate Peter confirming that this is not a strategic site. It is not a strategic site in the local plan. I would also like to just point out that the measurements taken were from an official report, which was a flood risk assessment carried out by Ray... report, which was a flood risk assessment carried out by, for Rye Farm, which is carried out by Rab, by a chap called Ray Pickering, who is a chartered engineer, a chartered water and environmental manager with 20 years' experience, so it was an official report. The actual measurement, he said, was by 45.2, we mentioned, it was actually 45.194 was the actual official measurement that he gave, and that was only 56 millimetres under the one in 1,000 flood risk flood plane, so one in 1,000 event. So that happened in 2013. Also, please remind members that there is also the benchmark point for the EA, which sits just on the lawn of the Wieldon's house on Rye Farm, which is set at 45.289, that's 45.289 metres, again, above the Ordnance Dayton point, so that is a fact. I know we disagree about this, well, the sequential test, however, it was pointed out about the Barclay Homes appeal and the flexibility that the inspector took. However, the reason that the inspector took the flexibility was because she considered that the surface water flooding on the six sites that were equal with Barclay Homes on the sequential test was about the same. Because the sequential test takes into account groundwater flooding, it takes into account surface water flooding, and it takes into account the river flooding, she considered because the surface water flooding was equal, that they were sequentially equal, those sites, and therefore, the flexibility was there. However, in this case, the site on the Horsham Road is far less from surface water flooding, far less from river flooding, and less from a groundwater point of view as well. So sequentially preferable, this site on the Horsham Road sits above this site on the Elmbridge Road. I also just wanted to point out that we are talking about the SUDs. I recognise that the floor levels have gone up to the 600 millimetres, but however, in this case, we are talking about development in flood zone two, I believe it's still in flood zone two of the SUDs, that is still considered to be development for this site, and I do not believe that the SUDs will be fit for purpose, bearing in mind that we had a flood in 2013 that took us within 56 millimetres of a one in 1,000 event, which was taken from a chap who was an engineer and an environment, chartered water and environment manager. So that is an official report, which I do have permission from the owners and also from the organisation to quote from. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to come back. Thank you.
Thank you. The officers, do you wish to sum up?
Could I just ask Peter about the SUDs in flood zone two?
Yes, of course. Just to confirm, as I said previously, sorry, can you, oh, sorry, just to confirm that the SUDs are located in flood zone one, and we consider them, they are part of the development. I'll just move to the plan quickly, you've seen it enough tonight, but it's the plan on screen, and it showed where the SUDs are on screen and on, sorry, Chris, can you put the cursor on?
So there, here the SUDs here, shown on screen, and flood zone starting there. So just to confirm, it's located outside of that. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much for that. Anything else, Peter?
I would only reiterate the point regarding the ODA testing, and I think I've set that out, and we've got a base date, we've got a base set of data which is considered to be appropriate. Just to reiterate the point, the relevant, appropriate assessment has been carried out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Heim, we are moving to the recommendation. As I said earlier, the recommendation, please, members. Recommendation A, subject to the amended conditions six, 10, 12, and conditions one to five, seven, eight, 11, and 13 to 24 in the officers' report, and subject to the completion of a 106 agreement, secure 30% affordable housing, infrastructure contributions towards off-site highways improvements, leisure contributions, environmental improvement contributions, early years and primary education contributions, and the provision, management and maintenance of play space, open space, and SUDs. Within six months of the date the committee resolution grant permission, permission be granted. Those in favour, please show.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Those against?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Abstentions?
One, let me, can I just, oh, two. Yeah, let me just take 19, that's fine.
Thank you very much. Therefore, permission is granted. Recommendation B, that if requirements of recommendation A are not met, permission be refused. Those in favour, please show.
Yeah, that's unanimous.
Unanimous. Thank you very much indeed, members. Completes our evening.